Yeah.
That's a little scary.
About all the filters.
Is everyone here except Sean?
He's here. Hi, Simon.
Okay, good.
Did you guys get any more snow? Or you just, just that one, one, two inch one? Yeah, it's no two inches of snow? Yeah. Did you get any more? Good.
Oh, yeah. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good, Sean.
Pretty good thing. How are you, Sean?
Good. Very good. Justin, thanks for helping me get unmuted there. Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Do we have Carol Jones? Ms. Jones, are you around?
I'm here.
Excellent. Well, I've got six o'clock. So happy Monday, everybody. Welcome to the city council meeting of April 26, 2021. I'd like to bring the meeting to order and ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Bella, if you're listening, I see you're unmuted. I'd like to have.
Yeah, I am. Sorry. Should I be muted?
No, no, I'd like you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I'm not on video because I just came home from soccer. It's gross. So sorry, that's like disrespectful or not. But okay, I'll lead. I'll lead. Okay, ready?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Very good.
Yay.
Thank you, Bella.
That's better than we usually do.
Thanks for doing that. Appreciate it very much. Ms. Jones, please call the roll.
Okay, Councilmember Cousins. And remember, we're telling us where you're located at and you're remotely located and what location. So Councilmember Cousins.
I want to ask Sean for a point of personal privilege before I do that. My son today received a word from the Bar Association that he has reacquired his lawyer's license after 20 years of absence. And so it's a very proud day for all of us in the Cousins family. And you've got another lawyer in town, just in case you need somebody, okay?
Congratulations.
Cousins is here from 7648 Forest remotely, the city of Dexter.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher?
Yes, I'm participating remotely from Alma, Michigan.
Councilmember Griffin?
Present remotely, city of Dexter, Michigan.
Councilmember Hubbard?
You're participating remotely from the city of Dexter, Michigan.
Councilmember Michelle?
Present in Dexter City, USA.
Mayor Keough?
Present, participating remotely from my home in the city of Dexter, Michigan.
Student Representative Gilbert?
Present remotely from Webster Township.
And student representative Amalak.
I think I heard a present, Ms. Jones.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, can you not hear me? Oh, I didn't know. Can you guys hear me?
We can. Yes, we can.
I can hear you now.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, I'm in present from that city of Dexter.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Item C on our agenda tonight is the approval of the meeting minutes from our regular city council meeting of April 12, 2021.
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
Moved by Fisher. Thank you.
A second.
Second by Ms. Griffin. Thank you, Jamie. Ms. Fisher, any comments to make on the minutes?
No corrections for me.
Ms. Griffin?
Yep, I had a few grammatical edits and maybe one more substantive one. On page one, maybe it's appeared this way in the past, but just under the call to order where it says the city council meeting was called to order at 6:00 PM by Mayor Keough, held via an online Zoom conference call. I don't know if we just need to add between Keough and held, something like and was. So it would read, it was called to order and was held via an online Zoom conference call.
This is the way I've been doing it ever since we've started.
Okay, I mean, so your call, if you want to make the change, it's probably something that hasn't made sense the whole time, but. Um, page two, this is the more substantive one, under E, how we've started calling out or calling attention to conflicts of interest. So just as Councilmember Michelle has indicated that he would abstain on the consent agenda due to conflict of interest. I think in terms of, I mean, I know we haven't adopted our ordinance yet, but I think it would be helpful to know what that conflict of interest is. And perhaps once we adopt an ordinance, we would have greater detail about what that might look like. So I don't know if here, I mean, I guess Zach could offer a suggestion. Or we just go back to the video and see what he said, something about there's, you know, a bill to being paid to his employer or something like that.
That's pretty much what I said.
Bills and payroll are part of the consent agenda.
Yeah. Just so people know what that is.
Fair enough.
Um, on page three, a little more than halfway down, the paragraph that reads, Mr. Breyer introduced. Mr. Breyer introduced to need for the text amendments, just the two should be the.
Okay.
On the top of page four, in the first bullet under Dan's update, this week, the DPW is trying, it says it, that it should be is. And then there's just a few more on page five. So on page five, under number five, bullet three, we are working on uploading our meeting. It says meetings recordings, but the meeting should not have an S. And then one, two, three, four, five, six bullet down that reads, I met with Verizon and regarding, so I would get rid of the and. And then the last one is under number six, under the mayor report, the last bullet there says this Friday at the Fireboard Meeting, there will be, the B is missing between will and the.
Yeah, and the Thursday is correct, right? You said Friday, but this Thursday, the Thursday is the correct.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, this Thursday. Yeah, that should be fine. Yeah. And then I guess a more general question, I don't know if. I mean, my preference is to correct grammatical mistakes in meeting minutes. And I know there's a lot of text there and there's a lot to put together. So it's certainly not, you know, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. I don't know, is this the best way to accomplish that by noting grammatical edits at this point? Is there a different process we can go through? Or I guess I'm just curious if this is the best way to handle that.
Jamie, I think, I think it is, just so everybody can hear them, because if you think a word is supposed to be what, something that's different, it gives the person that participated in a chance to correct it if they don't agree with you. So I I know, I know there were several of them this time, but I think it's just about, in front of everybody is the best way, I think personally.
Okay, yeah, as, yeah, as long as that's okay, at least with you. I just hope other people don't think it's tedious.
Nope, Carol keeps track of them and that way we can all hear them at the same time. We know what we're voting on at the point of meeting.
Okay, so I think that's all I had for now. Thank you.
Sure. Wa, I see your hands up.
Yes, thanks. Unless I'm missing something on page one, under approval of the minutes, that motion was made by Julie because she wasn't clear, correct?
Let me go back. That's true. That would not be a.
You're right. Yeah, right. Thank you. I picked it up.
I have motion Griffin, second Cousins.
Okay, well, correct. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Good catch, Wa. Okay, other council members, the comments on the minutes. See Paul's pencil. Zach, you're good?
Well, they got.
Excuse me?
No, they got them. That's the benefit of letting other people talk first.
Excellent. Okay, with that, Ms. Jones, please call the roll to approve the minutes with those corrections, please.
Okay. Cousins?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Keough?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you for that. The minutes are approved. Item D tonight is prearranged participation, and we have Mike Klowak from Meter Investment Management with us this evening. Justin, I'll let you introduce Mike further and welcome him into the meeting. Or maybe it's more appropriate that Marie does, if you prefer Marie, gives a little intro.
Hi, Ken.
I was muted and I was going to invite Marie to make the introduction.
Hello, Council. I'd like to introduce you to Mike Klowak. He's our investment advisor, a part of our investment advisor firm of Meter Investments. I know we have two new council people that aren't necessarily familiar with what Meter does for us. Basically, they do the investments for anything that is not cash. So they do commercial paper and they, I can let him explain everything if he would want, but if it's not in our basic checking account or with Michigan class, it's with Meter. So Mike, you want to take it over?
Certainly. Thank you for having me. Appreciate the opportunity to meet everyone. I've met some of you before, but unfortunately, we're still having to do it virtually. I look forward to the time I'll be able to make it down, back down to Dexter and meet everybody in person. So I think just the information that I provided is, a little bit of background, is information that we provide to you as a client on, we try and meet every three to six months, just to give updates on the market, up on the economy, things that we're tracking, things that are shaping the investment recommendations that we're making to you as a client. So I went through this with Marie last week, and so I'd like to just go through it with you real quick. I will try and stay within my 10 limits, 10 minute limit that you've allowed me as a, as a prearranged participant. But please feel free, if anybody has any questions or anything, you know, we really try and make these an open discussion. So if there's any, any thoughts or questions or anything, please feel free to to jump in. So if we could go down to that first page, I believe page nine. That.
Justin, share the screen for them?
Yeah.
Or I can, I've got a copy of it myself, if it'd be easier for me to do it myself. Okay.
Mike, you should be able to share now if you'd like.
Okay, there we go. Fantastic. Thank you. So this is a copy of what's in your board packet. So I just, I'll just kind of run through, again, this is the information that Marie and I have already gone through and discussed. Some of these are economic indicators, some of them are market indicators. Really, they're the things that, part, part of the things that we track as we put together and revise the investment strategy for our municipal clients. So obviously, as consumer spending is a huge part of the gross domestic product in the United States, that's one of the factors that we watch pretty carefully. We are almost just, almost, just back to pre-COVID levels for consumer spending. This says remains below, but I think it says that because we'd gone up to 100%, but then it dipped back down a little bit after that. And as I'm sure all of you are aware, anyone that is involved with or runs businesses or anything, service, the service sector is down considerably, restaurants, service workers and so forth. That's the gray line that you see there. By contrast, the orange line, which is goods, you know, I can tell you by the number of Amazon boxes that I have in my garage that, you know, consumer spending has been up considerably over the last year based on where it was before. Excuse me. So monthly change in non-farm payroll, the non-farm payroll report is really the biggest indicator that the government looks at on a month-to-month basis to determine the health of the economy, whether it's growing, whether it's contracting and so forth. So as you can see here, we lost almost 22 million jobs in March of last year, and this is again across the country. And so that was negative. And as you can see here, we still have a ways to go. If you were to add up all of these individual month gains, I think it would be just below halfway from the total losses of before. So we still have some way to go. And as we saw there in the previous slide, a lot of that has to do with the service sector. The restaurants are down, you know, anything recreational is down. You know, the venues that host large peoples, concerts, athletic events, things along those lines, those are still areas of the service sector that are still nowhere near where we have been in previous years. So that's a big portion of that labor market recovery, not just here, obviously, but across the country. Excuse me. So this is the Treasury yield curve and which is the graphical representation of the US Treasury bond, starting at the overnight rate, which is right now zero to 25 basis points and goes all the way out. And excuse me, that's the Fed funds rate as opposed to the US Treasury, but the US Treasury at, like, for example, the 30-day Treasury, it reflects that rate because those two are tied so closely together all the way out to the 30-year mark. Now, we only operate from the zero to five-year mark for your portfolio, but we like to pay attention to the whole thing because it really gives us kind of a state of the market, if you will. And the biggest thing that we have been discussing with people is that compared to six months ago, which was just before in December of 2020, about four months ago for this graph, but it really happened in, in October and November. We're about twice where we were. So yields have recovered considerably in the two, three, four, and five-year spaces compared to where they were six months ago. So what that means for you is that in the event of that funds become available for reinvestment or additional funds become available for investment, we're going to pick up a lot more in value than we would have six months ago. So the, we're, the market's in a lot better shape than it was. And that's to say the fixed income market, obviously, the stock market's going like gangbusters for anyone that's looked at their 401K lately. But that's not really our area of purview. So so the Federal Reserve outlook, these are indicators that we look at from a standpoint of specific changes. This, starting really at the bottom and working our way up, the federal funds rate is that rate that I spoke about a few minutes ago, which is the overnight rate that is really the greatest indicator of things that are affecting your bank deposit rates, they're affecting Michigan class. So things that are basically liquid. And so the indicators, as you can see here, are that there is not going to be any change likely in those short-term rates. If I could go back here for the slide for one second, as you could see here, from the dramatic change between the blue and the orange graph out at the five, the seven, and the 10-year lines, there has been no change at the one-month line. And the reason that is the way it is, is because of the federal funds rate. And so the indicators are that that rate is going to remain unchanged for at least this year and more than likely next year and the year after that. So short-term rates are going to stay low, longer-term rates are hopefully going to stay where they are for some time, although there's always the chance that the Fed could take action to try and bring those rates back down. Typically, when the Fed takes the action of raising rates, it's in relation to inflation. And inflation is a, you know, spending at a greater rate than what they would like to see. Typically, two and a half, two, two and a half percent is where they like to see their rates at, or excuse me, the growth rate at on an annualized basis. So if you could see here on 2021, going up to the top for a moment, the change in real GDP that they're projecting is a six and a half percent growth for 2021. So that's three times what they would normally like to see. Now, in normal times, you would expect that to be inflation that would cause rates to go up. However, when they cut the rates last March, they indicated that they were going to be doing more of a smoothing, which is to say an averaging of the inflationary factors. Whereas in previous years, they would simply, you know, inflation goes up, rates go up, and it was a more of a reactionary thing. Well, after they cut those rates in March because of COVID, they wanted to make sure that the economy had all the tools that they could, learning the lessons from what happened in 2008 and 2009. They're not going to be in any hurry to raise those rates up. So what you're seeing here is a projected change that could even be inflationary in the GDP. As you can see here, 22 and 23, those are going to kind of smooth out to where they'd like to see them. But 2021 is going to be a big year from a GDP perspective, but even that is not going to drive a rise in short-term rates. So, long story short, there's no indicator that we are seeing right now, all other things being equal, that are going to cause short-term rates to rise this year, next year. And so what does that mean for you? It means that we continue to monitor your cash flows, we continue to monitor your positions, and as things come up for reinvestment, we look at potentially pushing those out a little bit further. Obviously, we don't want to get in a situation where we are overinvesting you. We don't ever want to get a situation where Marie has to call me and say, hey, we need to sell something. And, you know, thankfully, we've not yet had to do that. We don't want to get in that situation now, but we do want to try and take advantage of those higher yields further out in the two, three, four, and five-year route. So your current portfolio, as of April 19, we had just over $20,000 in cash money market positions and 3.14 million in securities. Securities are made up of things that are allowable under Public Act 20, which are US Treasuries, US Agencies, Michigan Municipal Bonds, and top-tier rated commercial paper. So that's what your portfolio is made of. And then, as you see here, the distribution of maturities, and this again is what I was talking about a moment ago with respect to as those that 730,000 matures over the course of the next 12 months, we'll look to put more of that money a little bit further out to try and capture as much additional yield for you as we can. Right now, your portfolio is at about two and a half years in average duration, which is the average amount of time that the investments will mature at, and we're getting a weighted average yield of 86 basis points, which is, is pretty good compared to where US Treasuries and agencies are at that same, that's about twice what Treasuries and agencies at two and a half years. In other words, if we were to go out with cash and buy those Treasuries and agencies for, to mature in two and a half years, we wouldn't get that rate of return. We'd get a lower rate of return. So we're actually ahead of the curve from a return standpoint. So, and that's everything that I talked about with Marie and before, you know, with a few, few more minutes, does anybody have any questions for me or comments or thoughts or anything along those lines?
Mike, thanks for joining us tonight. How many years have we had you doing this? Is this your second or third? I can't remember. Is it maybe longer than that?
You know, 2020 is just kind of put a blank on counting. I think, Marie, it's what, two and a half, I think about.
Yeah, about two and a half, yeah.
So this is, okay, so this is the third year then, basically. What, what was the amount of, of securities that you were managing at the start? Was it similar to the 314?
You know, that's a good question. And from an operating perspective, if I'm not mistaken, it was about that, 3.14, three points, maybe 3.5. And the one time I think we did have to take a few dollars out, it was funds that had already matured. And then the remainder of the funds that we're thinking of, I think, were that construction project that we did, the bond proceeds that we were, we were working on for you when you issued that bond last time.
Gotcha. Thank you. Do other council members have questions for either Marie or Mike? I'm not seeing any hands waving. Mike, thanks for joining us. Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Take care and stay safe, okay?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks for bringing them to the meeting, Marie. Item E tonight is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion from council to approve the agenda, please?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Ms. Fisher?
I'll second Wa.
Second by Wa, thank you. Before I call the vote, are there any disclosures of conflict of interest that anybody needs to make? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve the agenda.
Yes, Fisher?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes, and I will be.
Griffin?
I was muted.
Go ahead. Finish your sentence, please.
Go ahead, Zach, sorry.
Yep, sorry, I was muted and couldn't unmute myself. I will be abstaining from the consent agenda because of line eight on page 74, payment to my employer.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Griffin?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Keough?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. We have an agenda. Moving on to page two of that agenda, we have no public hearings tonight under item F. So we're down to non-arranged participation. This is the first of two opportunities on the agenda for members who have called in or are listening and participating on the Zoom here to speak on any topic. If you would like to speak this evening, I'd ask that you use the raise hand feature, the yellow hand that's at the bottom of your screen when you put the mouse towards the bottom of the window. Or if you're calling in, you can hit star nine on your cell phone. Is there anyone that would like to speak this evening? I see Ryan has his hand up. Ryan, can you hear us?
Can you all hear me?
I can.
All right. Hi, everyone. I was looking through the packet earlier today and I saw that there were, you know, like, there've been on Facebook and and also just reported sometimes about the, the external art sculptures that have been damaged and vandalized. I saw there was mention of bringing in security cameras to be able to, be, be able to try to figure out what's going on. My, like, I, I, I am a little worried that Verizon is one of the vendors selected, since I know that they've got some, some not great history with, with some of their security, security camera and like facial recognition businesses. But I, I basically, I, I understand the desire to try to protect the art. I mean, I'm an artist myself. If I had watch my artwork be destroyed in public, it would really suck. But, but I am hoping that like, you know, however we decide to go about going about figuring out how to provide that kind of safety, that we do so with a mindfulness around not having surveillance where we don't need it, in the same way that when someone speeds, you know, like, we don't, we don't necessarily put up a permanent, you know, permanent road diet everywhere, and, you know, because, because it was sped somewhere. You know, we figure out a temporary solution, let's just be able to figure out what's going on. My hope would be that, you know, council and staff can figure out like some kind of temporary solution that doesn't, they can, they can like, you know, wash stuff for the summer and then figure out whether or not this is something that needs to be, you know, a little more permanent. So, you know, just a thought, but otherwise, you know, keep up the good work. Thank you all.
Thank you for joining us again and your comments on that. Appreciate the thought. Okay, Justin, do you see any other hands or people that have indicated? I do not, that they'd like to talk.
Also do not.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ryan. Appreciate that. Item H on the agenda is communications. In the packet, we have our upcoming meeting list. Not sure if there's any updates that anyone needs to make on that. Ms. Griffin?
If I just had a question about the zoning ordinance update subcommittee, I think we'd received some email communication about possibly rescheduling that. So I don't know if that's happened or when that would be, but I just wanted to flag that.
Okay. Justin, do you know if that has been changed from the third? It looks like it's supposed to be May 3 at 5:00 PM.
Michelle?
Or maybe Michelle knows.
I'm sorry.
The zoning ordinance update committee. Has that been moved?
I'm just, I have to send out an email to the, oh wait, I'm sorry, please forgive me. I already sent it out to the committee. Everyone but one was available. So in order to keep this moving, I'd like to go ahead and reschedule it to the 17th. And then we'll, Mike and I will find a way to, to bring the one person that wasn't able to be there up to speed so that if there's any questions, we can get them answered.
Okay, thank you. Marie?
I was going to address it in my report, but I'll address it here. We do have everybody scheduled for the May 8 city council meeting for the manager search at 1:00. At 1 o'clock, 1 to 5, well, 1 to 5:30.
Okay, thank you. Everybody understand that and when we're working on location, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Any other updates on the, um? The meeting list? Paul, I see your pencil waiting, sir.
With Pat's condition right now, uh, we've had a brief discussion ourselves. And, uh, we were going to, uh, make a call to, to, to Paul, uh, the, uh, director there to see his thoughts, but. It looks like Pat will probably resign from the, uh, library board. Uh, we want them to have a full slot slate of people to work with there. So please, uh. Consider that when you're there, we'll make that decision in about a month, okay?
Okay. Thank you for that. Let me know. Okay. I don't see any other further comments on the meeting list, so, uh, we'll move into reports. Our first report this evening is from our finance director, treasurer, assessor. Marie Sherry.
Good evening, council. I hope you're all doing well tonight and getting ready for the nice warm weather tomorrow. Um, so I did, um, as I mentioned, uh, we do have the schedule set for the May 8th meeting for the Kent, the city manager candidates. And, uh, they will be coming into the city office to meet with staff this week. Uh, two on Wednesday and one, I believe, on Thursday. Um, so that's one update I had for you. And. I think that is it as far as anything additional to my report. So does anybody have any questions on anything on my report?
Uh, Ms. Griffin?
Yep, thank, uh, hi, Marie. I don't, as far as the city manager search goes, my understanding is you're sort of the staff point person. Um. I'm interested, kind of like when we did the city offices discussion. And I said I'd, I'd be interested to know what city staff thinks about the proposed move to Dexter Crossing at the time. I feel like I'm in a position of. Potentially wanting more information from city staff in terms of what they're looking for in a city manager. Um, what's worked for them in the past, what hasn't worked for them in the past. I, so I think I just want to raise that. Um, that I'm interested in that sort of information. Maybe it's already. Being incorporated somehow. Um, but I just, I guess I just wanted to throw that out there. If it would be appropriate to. Uh, speak directly with staff members, I'm willing and open to do that. If it wouldn't be appropriate, that's fine too. Um. So I guess just a general question of how. Staff, others, you know, other input from staff is being incorporated into this process and how that might be then passed on to council members. Um, so that's one question. Um, and then the other question is just related to the border review. And just how that, um, activity, I think that's on page 21. How that activity compares to what you've seen in years past?
Okay, I'll start with the border review. It's actually lower than years past. However, in years past, we had a lot of, um. Small business exemptions being filed late. We kind of worked really hard with our small businesses to get them. I don't want to use the word compliant because it's not a regulation thing, but to get them so that they have this exemption in. Um, because it benefits them and it benefits the city also because it's less. Usually the people that fail to file the, file the form are also the people that fail to pay. So in the past, we had a lot of push to get those people and, and they're mostly all have that exemption now. So as far as the, um, assessor taxable value appeals, that is up by a couple, but. That's because, mostly because of the insert that I put in the notice to ask people to go over their records. And I actually had two or three people that came, that called me and said, you know, hey, this is not right. Um, so we made some corrections, actually two of them were new. Uh, or, um, recent sales. So we made corrections to their record. But as far as the rest, um, it's pretty normal. We had one more veteran than usual.
And is this where, uh, remember we recently approved those hardship exemptions? Is this where that activity would have shown up?
That's correct. I did, uh, get a contact by one woman who is probably going to apply for July because that one can be applied for in March, July or December.
Okay, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. And the, and the, the city candidate, Sean, did, did, does anyone else on the committee want to address that? Or do you want me to?
So, I'll, Marie, I'll start, um. So the, 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 the next step in the process, just so that, uh, everybody understands, the goal is to try to. Um. Announce the three people and bring in. Those, those people to meet staff in, in a couple of different situations. One, our, our office scenario and then two, our water sewer. Uh, public works departments and then get a chance to meet, meet council. Um, Marie is, as you said, Jamie, the point person. Um. Maria is going to participate with council on the 8th, so she'll be there, uh. Listening and learning as we ask questions of the different candidates. Uh, but I, I would encourage council members to reach out to staff if they have. Questions about what they're looking for, uh, in their future leader or what's worked. I forget how you put it, what's worked in the past or maybe what hasn't. Um, I, I'm assuming, Marie, that, um. That you wouldn't have any problem answering those questions. Maybe, maybe it would be appropriate to have all of those go through Marie and Marie can help. Bring back information. I don't know that every staff member would be necessarily potentially. You know, talking to everybody or I don't know how comfortable they all are, but I'm fairly confident Marie could help provide some of that input, um. To council members if they have questions. Marie, do you want to piggyback that answer?
I mean, yeah, I, I think if we're going, if I'm going to be like a conduit, then probably, and we haven't discussed this, but probably. The department heads at least should meet. So, because like I won't be on the visit that Dan's running.
Right.
Um, so I won't know. Kind of their feeling about things and, and, you know, I guess maybe a meeting before your meeting. That we can discuss it if that's the route that we want to go.
Why don't you see if you can get some, uh, some input and then, um, let council know when you have it and then we can figure out how it's best to be shared.
Yep, I'll get with Dan and Michelle tomorrow.
Jamie?
Yeah, 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 that sounds good. Um. Right, just because obviously, you know, you guys have been working in the office much longer than I, you know, been on this side of things. And so I'd appreciate your input and perspective.
Any council member comments on the treasure report or the fund balance summary or any of that? There's a lot more positive numbers on there than negative. That's a good thing, Marie.
Yep. Yep, we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, Paul, am I missing a pencil? No, Zach, everybody good? Okay to move on? Okay, Marie, thanks for your good report. Next up is our public services superintendent. Welcome, Dan.
Good evening, council. Good evening, everybody. I provided you with a. I provided you with a two-week report. I also have, uh, about four updates that I'd like to start with. Uh, my first updates on the Department of Public Works, uh, today, they were working. On hooking up the water line to the existing shut-off box that we have for the city garden. Um, they've got about 100 feet of water service line laid today. Uh, to the little hut there where we're going to put the meters and backfill preventers in. I'm hoping tomorrow they're going to come out of that little building and, uh, and run some, run another 100 or 200 feet of line and then we'll have the connection. So, uh, the garden can, uh, water here in the near future. Um, we had to move some dirt today. I had to take our big, uh, front end loader out, uh. And move that dirt pile back about 20, 30 feet because they didn't give us enough room for the amount of room we need for the city garden. Um, so we got that accomplished today. When I was out there after lunch, uh, a local farmer had called Kurt Augustine, our, uh, DPW former back. He is working on getting somebody to come out there and displow that one more time. Um, prior to the garden going in and getting the edges a little bit straighter, um, than what they look like. Uh, Mr. Cousins, the, the, the reason that looked like it was not square. It's because of where they put their silk fence with the Avalon Project. Um. We were about 15 feet off where we thought we were initially going to stick the garden. Um, with their, um, grading easement, they came over into the city garden. So we're going to move that garden over a little bit. A little bit farther towards, uh, Walkabout. So we should have that all straightened out here in a, in a couple weeks.
Towards Walkabout, that's even further to the south.
Yeah, we're going to have to move it a little bit. They, we thought that they were going to use around a 10, 12 foot easement, grading easement in between the Avalon Project. And the garden, well, that at the, at the Dan Hoey end, that stretched out to 20 feet. So they can get their curb and their road in there. So we kind of pushed the garden just a little bit over to accommodate their easement that they had with, uh. Um. With their grading with the Avalon Project there.
So does, does, uh, in your mind, does that? Include, though the garden isn't like a two halves, two lengthy halves.
Yep.
With, with its, the, uh. Uh, down the middle there, the, uh. Path down the middle. Does that eliminate both of those pieces?
I, to be honest with you, I didn't get into the details with Kurt today, other than we were going to move it over towards. Walkabout Creek, but I can follow up with him tomorrow if they're supposed to be. I didn't know there's supposed to be a path down the middle and there's supposed to be two separate gardens. But I can check. I'm sure Kurt's got that.
Yeah, I, 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 I think Kurt said that his goal is to, to have the same size as it was.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm still interested in seeing how it's going to work out and, you know, that, that took away some of the. Previous tilling that we did there for how many years?
I know.
When that happened was, it's disappointing because it certainly is easier to plant. Tilling there, uh, and I don't know. Who's going to come out and do the, the, uh. I, I know that, who's, are you doing it just by running a, uh?
We're going to have a tractor out there to displow and I think Mr. Breyner is going to help us with that. And then Kurt had indicated to me that he was going to get some kind of big rotor tiller to go up and follow up after that.
Okay, I'll wait and see. Thank you very well.
So it's going to be tough, Paul. It's a brand new garden. There's, it's ground that has never, you know, has never been garden. It's going to be probably a little bit more difficult this year. But we'll try to do our best to get it ready for you guys.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the garden? Um, we finished, uh, flushing hydrants late last week. Um, when we flush our hydrants throughout the city, uh, there's, uh, about 330 of them. Uh, we also go around and look at preventative maintenance that needs to be done as we operate them, open and close them. We found four fire hydrants that, uh, need a little bit of preventative maintenance. I know the guys worked on two of them today. Um, when we're doing flushing hydrants for the city in the, in the spring and in the fall, we do it twice a year. We also operate valves. So we try to get all the valves we can in two years, all of them operated, um, along with doing the preventative maintenance on the fire hydrants. Any questions on that?
So all the valves have been turned then?
Yes, yes, they have. Um, you know, the sewer update, uh, every year. We try to go around or we do go around and we inspect every sewer manhole in the city of Dexter. We've got 340 sewer manholes. We try to do that over a, a two week to month, depending on the day-to-day demands. Um, we open up the manholes, we look inside to see, um, what the structures looks like. We also look for, uh, potential backups. Over the years, we've caught a couple of potential backups before they actually happen. Um, last year on Dexter Chelsea Road, we had, uh, w- uh, water infiltration into a manhole. Um, that we ended up, um, catching and at the right time that we could go in and, uh, had a company come in and seal that up and, uh. Put a coating on the inside of it. So that'll be starting, uh, next week. Any questions on that?
I'm not seeing any.
Any questions on my report?
Dan, I just have a follow-up on, uh, somewhat older item. What's the status of the repair to the twisted fish?
You know, I'm going to have to back with you on that, Sean. I did ask and it was a while ago, but I don't have an update. Um, the last time I talked to Kurt, he thought. I thought he said he was going to take that to Ace Welding over on Jackson Ave, but I haven't followed up on him to, to see if that had, that repair has been made. Justin, do you have any updates on that?
Yeah, so, so he, he had taken it over to Clapwrench and, um, it was, it was waiting on Clapwrench to have, have a minute to be able to. To, to finish working on it. Um, I think he had started, but I got interrupted.
Okay, just curious. Thanks.
And then Sean, you had asked me about, uh. Down at the park, we had a fire hall. Uh, Kurt, we tried to contact L and J. They don't have enough people anymore to provide that service. So Kurt reached out to another company. He's waiting to hear back, not only about down there, um, but down behind, uh. Uh, the cemetery there at Broad and. Run, so hopefully we'll get something taken care of relatively quick.
You're talking about the limb removal from it within the streams on the areas. Yeah, great, great. Thanks for the follow-up on that, Dan.
Yep.
Any other questions for Dan? Okay, we'll keep moving right along. Uh, Michelle is up next. Our community development manager. How are you, Michelle?
I'm fine. How was council this evening?
Good.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, so before I go into the few updates that I've got, does anybody have any questions for me on the report?
Uh, Ms. Griffin?
Yep, thanks. Hi, Michelle. Uh, I'm on page 44. C1, the update about this self-storage facilities text amendment we talked a bit about last time. Maybe this is a question I can have an offline discussion with you or, um, get more details from you. I'm just curious about point C where it says when adjacent to a residential use or zoning district limitation can be placed on the hours of operation. Um. I'm just, you know, I, I brought up last time how we are immediately adjacent to the. And I know, you know, one of those businesses runs, I think, three shifts. So I guess I'd be curious to know more details about. What's the relationship between that zoning district and this light industrial, the special land uses? Are we doing something different somewhere else because of resident concerns? Is this consistent with what has been done in the industrial park? Um, yeah, those sorts of questions, I guess.
Um, so. Uh, being that the, um, um. The ex, the expansion that is, um, um. I'm sorry, states, let me go back. You're wondering about the industrial park, um, and how it borders Dexter Crossing, correct?
Right, right. And just how they compare or contrast with this other industrial area and. Are we doing the same sort of regulatory things in both areas or are we doing something different?
So, the industrial park was set up. Um, years ago, uh, and I believe. It, and it did come before the Dexter Crossing subdivision did. Excuse me.
Yes, quite a few years.
Yep, um, the early 80s is when the, um, park was being planned. Um, by the mid to, um, to late 80s, it was done. And the, um. Um. And the businesses started to move in. Um, there was no residential at that time adjacent to the park. Um, and so when the zoning. Regulations for, uh, the R and D district were, uh, created. Um, I don't know what thought went into future residential because at that time there was none. Um, when Dexter Crossing came in, um, there are buffers. Um, between the residential areas. Along that east buffer of the industrial park, um, that helps some with, with noise vibration. Um, but it's not going to take all of it, um, out of the way. Um, I think the best thing that I can tell you is, um, staff and the, um. And council, planning commission, community in general. Learn more every year about how to be, um. Cognizant of what nuisances there might be from situations, um. Like the one that you're talking about. So, and that could just be why. Excuse me, um. These particular, uh, special use considerations are established in this area.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, if there's no other questions, then. Let me give a quick update on the SBA grant opportunity. The, um, the information has gone out to the businesses. There has been one update from the Small Business Administration. And that is that they've chosen the platforms, uh, by which the. And that is that they've chosen the platforms uh by which the, the businesses will be able to submit their applications. Those platforms are Clover, Square, and Toast. So if you know any businesses that are looking for that information. Feel free to let them know or they can contact me. Um, but all of the restaurants that um would be eligible for this grant opportunity. Have been given this information. Excuse me, and we will continue to keep um the businesses updated on this and any. Any grant opportunities coming down the pipe. The um, I had the opportunity to step in for Justin last week and be interviewed by Lucie Anne Lance. Um, and if you've ever talked with Lucie Anne, you know she's just a bundle of energy and radiates positiveness. Like nobody else that I know of. Um, so it was, it was a very good interview. Um, or opportunity to interview, and I got a chance to talk about some of the things that are happening. Um, in the midst, or I should say, the way things are happening in the city in the midst of COVID. Specifically from a business point of view. And that is, we've got, we've got new businesses that have moved in during COVID, everything from. The, the new tattoo parlor, which is our on Broad Street, to Be Joyful Recycling Shop, I'm sorry. Zero waste shop um on the corner of Broad Street. Um, we talked a little bit about how the master plan's been updated, and now we're right, we're. Right in the middle of updating our zoning ordinance, so we can implement some of those changes that were envisioned in the master plan. Um, and one of those being the accessory dwelling units. Um, none of this went into real deep, deep dive depth sort of thing. But it did give me an opportunity to really promote the things in a very short period of time that the city is doing and, in my opinion, doing well. Um, so unless you have any other questions from me, I will tell you that I probably won't be here for your next meeting. Um, or your first one in May. Um, I will be coming back uh with my husband from New York. Um, after seeing our daughter and son-in-law. So, hope you have a good meeting. Enjoy the coming weeks and the nicer weather.
Enjoy your, your time away, Michelle, and thanks for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Any last questions for Michelle? Okay. Scrolling down through the agenda, we do have a report from the Office of the Sheriff that's been included on page fifty-one, fifty-two of the packet. Does anybody have any comment or question related to the sheriff's report to make? Okay, seeing none. Uh, Justin, you are up for the uh city manager report, sir.
Sure, thank you. I just have a couple of updates for you. Um, the first is Councilmember Griffin reached out to. Indicate an interest in attending the MML elected officials. Um, I was planning on signing her up for that. If anyone else is interested in attending, um, please let me know. Um, shoot me an email here. In the next day or so, um, because that's coming up. I think the first date is April thirtieth, so that this coming Friday. Um, we have hired a new farmers market manager. Um, her first day was today. And um, opening day of the market is uh May first, this coming Saturday. Um, so, you know, get out and uh enjoy the, the nice weather this weekend and um shop local. Um, we.
Want to give us, will you give us a name?
Sure, uh, her name is Samantha Roeflock. Um, she's uh, she's a recent transplant to Michigan, um, coming from, from Colorado. Uh, but she has experience working in uh farmers markets in Colorado. Um, and we're really excited to have her on board. Um, she seems like she has quite a bit of experience in, in marketing. Uh, particularly as it relates to um farmers markets. So we're, we're excited to have her on board and, and get her started. Um, keep promoting the, our, our own farmer's market here.
That's great.
Yeah. Um. So we, we are looking to put out the water well barricades on Main Street this coming Wednesday. Um, the DPW is gonna be short-staffed Thursday and Friday, um, so they wanna try and get it, get them out a little bit early. Um, and that way they're, they're in place for, for this weekend. Um, I think the, the first day folks input stuff out is May first. But the, the goal is to have that stuff out for them. Um, for your next meeting, um, we will likely have another closed session relating to the uh Timdol. Uh, the proposed settlement agreement and um council will likely need to take action. We have an upcoming uh proposed sidewalk project um related to the CDBG uh grant funds. Um, the goal is to replace uh certain sidewalk ramps with ADA accessible sidewalk ramps. Um, the goal is to, to start that project this summer. Um, so you'll, you'll see an item here coming up shortly. We uh, it also in relation to, to roads and sidewalks, um, we've received news that uh. The third street, the third and Broad Street project um is unlikely to happen this year. Um, so what we're looking to do is switch gears a little bit and um bring back a proposal to try and get. Uh, the Dexter Crossing subdivision work done uh this calendar year. And move third and broad back to next calendar year. Um, and what we can have uh more of a discussion about that um as we get into the, the roads budget.
Why, why don't you give them a little brief update on what the delay is, Justin?
Sure, so um the, the, the biggest issue is communication with um MDOT and, and their um railroad section. Communities all across the state have been having issues, um, getting projects reviewed by, by the MDOT uh railroad section. Um, and it is pushing our project back significantly to the point where. We're not gonna be able to meet MDOT bid letting deadlines. Um, because we have to go through the M, MDOT bid letting process because we received tip funds, um, tip grant, grant funds. So, um, because of, of the delay and, and their review process. Um, it's pushing us too far back into the season to be able to, to actually get the, the roadwork started and be done before. Um, winter hits. Um, but we, we, we do think that we can get um Dexter Crossing potentially bid out here pretty quickly. And get that roadwork started and potentially complete uh this year. Um, just because we don't have to go through the MDOT bid letting process. We can do our own bid let, bid process um and have a much quicker turn around. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks. I just thought it made sense to explain a little about the delay.
Sure. Um, and I am still working on getting a, a packet out to you uh tonight for uh Wednesday's budget meeting. And with that, does anybody have any questions?
Uh, Jamie?
Yep, thanks. I, I just had sort of a follow-up comment to uh Mr. Hennard's uh comment earlier at the beginning of this meeting. I remembered some stuff about cameras in the public sphere, um, hearing about it. I did a quick search. It seems like Ipsy Township. Has done um some stuff in that area. And perhaps in conjunction with the Washington County Sheriff's Department. I've been able to pull up just a couple of articles about, you know, pros and cons, where, you know, they were serving the public. I think it might have been particular um to a specific residential neighborhood. Um, anyways, I don't know if we've, if we have or we've considered reaching, reaching out to Washington County Sheriff's Department or whoever our local um. Lieutenants are, um, and I guess just getting input from them.
Yeah, so, so, so I did have a chance to speak with our, our sergeant about um video cameras and, and. You know, his comment was just that they're, they're supportive generally, you know, the, you know, it, it helps them do their job and, and uh conclude investigations. Um, into potential issues sooner. Um, he didn't necessarily have a um specific recommendation on any camera or, or set of cameras. Um, but you know, as I, I talked about in the packet, um, meeting with Verizon. Um, Verizon is our wireless carrier, and so I wanted to reach out to Verizon just to get kind of a, a, a scope, a lot of the. Kind of what does the world of cameras look like? Um, what are, are, what are the potential options out there? Um, because you know, if, if anything is, is over, you know, if, if this is a route we decide that we want to go, um, the installation of video cameras. Um, likely we will need to do uh some sort of a bid or RFP process um to actually make that selection. But I just kind of wanted to wrap my head around um what, what is out there? What, what are, what is the potential? We, what, what, what can we potentially do? Um, so you know, that, that's, that's the reason why, why I met with them and.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I mean, I guess there's probably lots to consider in terms of this idea of public surveillance and. And public parks. I mean, I definitely understand what the motivation behind it is. Uh, I think certainly opportunities for either greater public input, um, or just. You know, in-depth conversations about, you know, other potential unintended consequences of that.
Absolutely. Yeah, and, and you know, there, there are. Yeah, I'm, I'm learning more about this than I ever thought I would, but there, there are some potential issues like, you know, um, is there immediate access to, to um an electrical outlet? Um, you know, is there access to um cabling for internet access or do you have to do like a modem? Um, you know, if there isn't electrical access and you do something like a um. Uh, solar panel, then you have to have like a battery to be able to feed the solar, you know, just like a drain into a battery so you can continuously feed the. The camera, um, you know, there's, there's, there's quite a bit to, to consider.
Thank you.
Well, I think, I think we're just at the information gathering stage of that anyway, so.
Right.
I agree that's a future topic and it can be broad, it can be very broad depending on how, or very narrow depending on how we want to go, so. Uh, other questions for, or Jamie, were you done? I'm sorry.
I'm done. Yes, thank you.
Okay, uh, other questions for Justin? Okay, uh, I'll jump over to my report. Uh, we talked a little bit about the city manager search already. Um, I am, I have initiated the city council vacancy um process. Uh, as I mentioned in the report there, uh, we received five candidates um by the, the deadline that we had posted. And I started interviewing and um planning to have a recommendation for you at the May tenth meeting. Um, if anybody's got any questions along the way or wants to talk to me about it, I'm more than happy to do that. Uh, we did include, uh, so that everybody could see the names and what was submitted by each of the five um residents. So I will keep that, that process moving. Uh, another process that I hope to initiate here over the next couple of weeks. Is uh our student uh representatives will be. Uh, having their terms come to the, come to the end here in June as well. So I've got to start interviewing some of the people that have submitted applications for those. And uh, we'll be bringing those recommendations forward as well, so. Um, that'll keep me busy in May. Does anybody have any questions for me on anything? Uh, Mr. Cousins, I see your hand. We're Pennsylvania.
So uh, the city council vacancy, uh. Uh, every, well, four of the five candidates indicated uh an address. Um, Ms. Wilkinson did not, can you tell me where she lives?
She lives on Third Street. Uh, towards the, I call it southeast end of that. I don't know the exact address of, off the top.
It's Third Street, okay. Thank you. And the second question that relates to that is that in the past, we have. Had a practice that the. Person that was. Second in the last election. Was to be considered and have a little bit edge up. As I remember our discussion, somebody can counter that if they don't want to, but.
We, we have not, we have, we have not had that past practice. Uh, one, one time a person did get selected that was. In an election, but that's not been the past practice.
So that was the last, that was the last election that that was done, though, is that correct? Not this one, but the one before?
Um. You're gonna have to help me. I don't believe that's the case.
Okay, I, I, I don't believe Scott Bell ran.
He did not.
Before he was appointed.
He did not.
Okay, and uh, okay, so that, that's, that's, that was my questions there. Uh, and related to that, I, I guess I felt that. Uh, if you were interested in running for the council, that you would have had your name in on the last election. There are, uh, there's one person that has applied for that, that is uh, did run. I think he was the third. Choice of the citizens. Uh, and so I would uh hope that we would use that as a. As at least an indicator that that person was interested in the job originally and still is, while other four are, are not. Have, did not submit their names for the last election, even though they have this time here. Uh, there's a difference of running and of being elected by a larger group. Than uh, and a citizens group. Um, where you have an opportunity to talk to people, place your positions, while in this position here, it's. Choice of the mayor then with the uh, with the uh. Uh, blessings of the council by a, by a, at least four votes. So. I just want to put that out there that I think it's important that, that we consider tho- those uh issues as we move forward in this decision here. Uh, it is a, it's my understanding that it'll be uh, we're six months away from the last election. This appointment will be May and it would be uh eighteen months until the next election. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the, this vacancy would be filled until the next election. My goal is to determine the qualifications of all the applicants. As I did the last time, I had to do this, the last couple of times I've had to do this. Um, as you can see, some people submitted a very detailed letter that provided their qualifications. Some did not. Um, I don't view this choice as a popularity contest. Um, because there's only a partial term that's being filled. Um, I'm gonna. You know, complete the interview process with everybody, ask them the same questions. And figure out who I think can help our council move forward best. It's the same thing I did two years ago when Ray Tell stepped off with, with that group of thirteen or fourteen people that had submitted. And even prior to that, when uh. I think Mr. Smith got, had got appointed um in a similar light, so. In this case, we have five good, good applicants. I've talked to some of them. I've talked to some of them uh prior to them submitting their name. Uh, talked to some of them after they've submitted their name. I just have not been able to talk to everyone yet and um. I plan to complete that in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me? Okay, great. Thanks, everybody. We are down to the consent agenda then. Uh, there's two items on the consent agenda.
A move, we approved the two items listed on the consent agenda, bills and payroll and the amount of. Three hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents and the third quarter budget amendments.
Okay, motion by Ms. Fisher? Is that why? Thank you, why? Second by why? Ms. Jones, please call the vote, and um I believe uh council member Michelle's will be abstaining from this vote.
Okay. Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle?
What's saying?
Fisher?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Kyo?
Uh, yes, thank you. Motion carries. We are down to old business item K one, uh, consideration. Of the uh alley vacation, Fourth Street alley vacation request by Mike Penn.
Okay.
Let's, um, wait, Michelle, hold on a second. Let's get a motion on the table before we um. Anybody, oh, Jamie, I see your hands up.
Yeah, although I had an uh motion to uh approve the vacation uh subject to the, to the conditions as noted on page ninety.
Page ninety, let me get, make sure I got that in front of me.
Could I ask one minor cli- um correction, please, Jamie?
Yep, sure.
It's not an approval. It would be a determination. That it's in the best interest of the city to vacate. If we go ahead and approve it, the city has thirty days in which to um. Send this information to the state and treasurer. County, et cetera. We won't have all the easements from the petitioner. We won't have all the easements from the petitioner in 30 days, so.
So what we need is a motion to determine that the council determines it would be in the best interest to vacate. That's sort of an early step is what you're saying, Michelle.
Yes, it keeps it moving but doesn't fully approve it.
Okay, happy to amend my motion to motion that this vacation would be in the best interest of the city of Dexter with the conditions as noted on page 90.
Thank you.
Zach, are you okay with that?
Yep.
As the second?
I am.
Okay. Thank you both. Okay, Michelle?
Thank you so much. So this has been postponed a couple of times to collect additional information. We have about as much as we can as we and the applicant can provide at this particular point. Everything is moving in the right direction. The, the, excuse me. The purpose for the postponement from the last meeting was to get some clarification on the impact of vacating the road and the alley on extension of public sewer, public utilities. Excuse me. The it is, it is a good idea to be cognizant of closing streets and roads, alleys as well. Excuse me. Because that does limit the ability to extend public water and sewer or other public utilities. In this case, the petitioner has said to staff that, and we have it in email, that he is willing to grant an easement over the entire vacated areas so that if extension in the future is needed, the city would have that ability. The city engineer is currently working on drafting that easement, but it was not ready for your review this evening. There have been some minor updates to the answers to the questions and to staff's comments. The spirit of it is all the same. Excuse me, and so, excuse me. With that, I am very comfortable with you making the determination that this would be in the best interest of the city, provided that the conditions as outlined on page 90 are satisfied by the petitioner. Those being that the neighbor provides a letter of support, that would be Mrs. Finley. Even though she does not have ownership rights, it's more of a what's the word? Consideration that we're taking into account her feelings. Plus, a portion of her driveway would go would still be on the vacated parcel that would become Mr. Mr. Pence, and he's agreed to give her an easement. The AT&amp;T and DTE easements, the petitioner is working with those two utilities and it is moving along at a nice clip. It just won't be done in time for the 30-day requirement. The petitioner will grant the easement to the city as I've explained. And then once all of this documentation is together, recorded, staff will bring this back so that you can review and approve the vacation officially and adopt a resolution to that fact. If you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Michelle? Michelle, I appreciate you working with the applicant and I appreciate the applicant's willingness to be cooperative relative to the utility's easement. I think that's an important long-term planning tool if it's ever needed, but I appreciate that consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no questions, we had a motion by Ms. Griffin and a second by Michelle's that recommend that we're determining that this is in the best interest of the city. So if Ms. Jones can call the vote to approve that determination, I would appreciate it, please.
Yes. Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Old business item K2 is consideration of the request from the Dexter Chamber of Commerce for the Friday night music series.
I'll make that motion. Put it on page 115 at the the city food, the concerts, Friday night activities.
Okay, motion by Cousins. Is there a second, please?
Second, Michelle's.
Oh, thanks, Zach. I was clicking over. Appreciate it. Second by Michelle's. Okay. Any comments, Paul? Anything you want to make?
No, I think, you know, as you see, they they had a much better map, more distinctive. And it talked about how they were working with these two the scouts, the various other groups here to make sure that would happen. And so I think this can be done safely with the distancing and the suggestions have been made by the staff, so.
Very good. Other council comments on this? Ms. Fisher and then Ms. Griffin.
Paul, what do they mean by eating on the sidewalk? Are they going to set tables on the sidewalk? I think we have to make sure that everybody can use that sidewalk, right?
Yes, but I think it's on the outside of the sidewalk, that's what they meant, you know.
Okay.
The sidewalk, people sit on the outside of the sidewalk.
Gotcha.
So I think they were thinking that that area was considered, you know, between there and the curbs were considered sidewalk area, but it's not actually sidewalk.
I understand. Thank you.
Ms. Griffin?
Yep, thanks. A couple of thoughts. Yeah, I wouldn't want the sidewalk to be obstructed. But also, it wasn't clear to me if they for sure wanted Central Street closed or not. That would be okay. Good.
Excuse me, I didn't hear that.
Are they for sure wanting Central Street closed?
I don't know that for sure. And you said what? You would be opposed to that if they did?
No, I would not be opposed to it. So it just wasn't clear to me. I think it was Central Street could be closed to, I think there were a couple of sort of could-be's and it wasn't clear to me if they wanted that, yes or no, but maybe, Michelle.
In the past, it hasn't been, I can.
Yeah.
I can tell you that I went over point by point with Quayle from the chamber after your meeting so that she had called and wanted to have a very thorough understanding of what the council's concerns were. So I went over point by point and the portion or the the item about the closure of the street was that if this, what they're trying to communicate to you is if the city wants Central Street closed, they will work with the city and they will, they're okay with closing the street. They're not requesting it, but if that's what the city wants, they are willing to work with the city.
Okay, thanks. So I get, yeah, I mean, I guess I'm fine with it either way. I'm curious to know what other people think. It's probably more convenient not to close it. I mean, and just generally, I think like I mentioned at the last meeting, I'm not really concerned about food consumption really happening throughout the park. Outdoor dining is permitted at 100% capacity right now with social distancing, you know, as long as people are masked when they're not consuming their food. So I would not personally place the restriction on them that they need to name an area to be a designated eating area. If that's something they want to do because that's what they're comfortable doing, that's fine with me, but again, like I said before, I think the concert would sort of function like outdoor dining in the sense that I think people would pick their spot, they'd set out their blanket and they would sit there socially distanced. So I guess those are my thoughts. I'm happy to approve it with whatever restrictions they want to do. I think those would be necessary.
Go ahead, Paul.
The closure of the streets, you know, during Dexter Day, it's closed in two spots. It's closed at Main Street and it's closed at Central there right by the yeah, so, yeah. Fifth Street, yeah, right. And so that's not their desire to have that happen. It also restricts the parking that people would have and access to get in either way from that spot.
And with the closure, so you know, if the idea were to be to close it every Friday, I think the barricades could be set up without an issue. But we would probably have to call in DVW on overtime in order to take the barricades down. And there would be, there would have to be conversation about whether the chamber pays for that or the city helps them with that, but I would you know, typically with when events request special consideration like that, they will provide funds for that type of activity.
Well, if we're not, if we don't believe they are asking for the roads to be closed, then we should make sure that the application doesn't have the box checked, roads to be closed. Meaning, meaning we need to decide in this motion whether we're approving it to be closed if they need it and they can start off without it and then conversation can be had. That would match the application or we need to say we're approving it without Central Street closed because it differs from what's on the application right now.
That's kind of funny, Sean, because it looks like there's a question mark in the road closure box.
Now, it looks like an X to me.
The one down below is type of activity.
Down below, yep.
Yeah, two of them.
I, the brief conversation I had with Quayle is that they did not want, need the roads to be closed, okay? So if the motion needs to be that I made, needs to be approved without the roads being closed, with further consideration for a request in the future, that's something that can be done, correct?
Yeah, I think let's just, let's just make it clear what we're approving is all.
Okay, so my motion would be without the roads closed, okay?
Okay. Zach, are you okay with that friendly amendment?
Yep, just a question for staff. Would that mean then if we do determine we want the roads closed, we have to go through this process again?
Yes, unfortunately. If that's the motion we change it to, if we approve it with the roads closed if they want it, then we don't have to and it can be a judgment call.
Well, what I'm thinking is I'm okay with it being optional, but at staff's discretion with so if the first one is really busy, then that may be something we want to consider and I want to be cognizant of the time window if we have to wait for our meetings, but I won't object to the change.
Paul, we defer to you as our rep there. If you think that they don't need it, we'll start that way. And if they quickly feel like they need the more space, they're gonna have to get an application back into us.
It's perfectly fine.
Okay. All right, then we'll leave it as motion by Cousins, second by Michelle's to approve the application without the closure of Central Street as the motion that we're discussing slash acting on. Other council comments?
Do we need to, I'm sorry to raise my hand, do we need to clarify this bit about the eating sidewalk situation? Because that's also noted with question marks and sort of could-be language. Do we need to finalize that or are we okay leaving that as TBD?
No intent, no intent that I had with Quayle, I didn't talk to Chuck, I didn't Quayle about that, that there was, there's no intent to have that. You know, don't spread a blanket out on a sidewalk. You spread it out on the grass and that's what they did in both sides of the sidewalk in the past and the roads were not closed in the past.
So I think it's, I think we can make part of the motion or whatever that it's clear that we don't want the sidewalks blocked. I also think we want people who are gonna sit between the sidewalk and the street to be careful that they're, you know, they are, there is active traffic next on both sides of the park. So whatever they do, they gotta be careful not to be too close to the street.
They have always done that.
Yep, I agree they have. I you know, what I liked about this plan from the beginning is that they were at least trying to be conscious of the social districting measures and getting people in rows of seating and, you know, the ways to get the Boy Scouts or Cub Scouts involved with passing out masks. Enforcing all those things I think is important, so. I'm willing to give this a try. I look forward to the music again. Other comments from other people? Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the vote.
Yes. Hubbard?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Michelle? Griffin?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. New business item L1 is consideration of the ACH master plan.
I'll make that motion to approve the ACH master plan as presented.
Okay, motion by Ms. Fisher? Can I get a second from? Second by Jamie, I think I saw your hand there. Thank you, Ms. Griffin. So motion by Fisher, second by Griffin to approve the master plan as presented on pages 121 through 136. Justin, is there any discussion? Anything you want to share?
Sure, just that, yeah, this has been, you know, several months in the making. The Arts Culture Heritage Committee works to update the ACH master plan. They're on about a two-year schedule. They try and look at it every year, but it actually is coming before council for updates about once every two years. The most recent round of updates includes the addition of a new section, which is the Framework for Collaboration. They've also made some minor text edits here and there and then kind of revamped how they're looking at and envisioning the future of their projects. So rather than breaking it down into different project category types, they have it more in projects that are ongoing that they want to continue doing. More immediate projects that they'd like to take a look at and start kind of the visioning process for those and then ideas that have been brought up but are kind of sidelined until there's really kind of a champion. And that's on page 131. I know the ACH Chair, Sanam Robb, is here to help answering questions that you might have, but I'll leave it with that.
Why don't you unmute Sanam, please?
Good evening, council.
Hi, anything to add? Good evening.
No, thank you. I think Justin really covered it. The only thing I would like to add is that one of the things that came up and made us to really look at this and again, in our projects has been that as Payne Dexter Festival has moved from a fundraising event to really a community event that we are making it happen pretty much every year, same as, you know, our temporary art selection is something that is happening ongoing every year. We are looking at what else ACH can offer and can do and bring to council for as recommendations. So that was the the goal of looking at the master plan for the Framework for Collaboration. We are starting to get requests from various groups within Dexter and also outside of Dexter for possible collaboration and that made us think of a framework that is at the same time as it's a framework, it's also flexible and um, at the same time as it's a framework, it's also flexible and gives time for, um, conversations. So we have a better approach and more unified and consistent approach as, um, requests for collaboration with um, other groups come to us.
I like it. I think it's very well laid out.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Griffin?
Yep, thanks. Uh, I just had a really minor comment, uh, if I can find it. Get this out of my way. I think it's on page 128, on the second short paragraph, our collaborations for an undertaking, that whole blue text, just says at L in that second line there, I thi- think it should be et cetera, at L denotes when you're talking about other people and et cetera, when you're talking about.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Wa.
Thanks. Um, uh, I guess first I just want to say I, I, I really like the changes that you guys have made to the project descriptions. I know that in the past we've had a lot of, um, conversations about how to rank projects and whatnot. A lot more sense and, um, i- it seems to me like it'll help you guys be more productive in choosing what to do next and making decisions on that. Um, I hope you agree with that. Um, my one question is on page, it's one of the last pages. Uh, 136 for potential funding methods. Is, did you just talk about the Dexter Community Fund under the, uh, Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation at all? Because I know we had talked about that in the past and I just wondered if that should be added there.
I don't believe we, we talked about that.
Well, I attended, I remember a couple of years ago I attended like a, in a little, yes, I went there and went through that training because we were thinking about applying for grants through that program. So it might just be something to add.
Yeah, I think you probably have more, um, involvement with that that I had, well, um, unless Justin has anything else for that I'm.
I'm, 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 I'm familiar with the program, um, and I, I think it is, it is a valid, uh, potential source to, to add to the document.
Yeah, and I, and the, the way I was reading this is you're not limiting yourself to these four or five that are there either. So if something else needs to be added at any time, I don't think anybody's gonna tell you, you can't pursue it in that light or.
Sure, that wasn't a criticism. It's just I know that's something that I have been, I had thought about in the past and, you know, I just want to make sure you guys continue to think about it as a possible funding source.
I appreciate that. I think, um, any of those things, one of the things, um, I see the master plan is as, um, a reminder of the work and the resources and things for the next, um, committee and the next committee. So, um, I know that it has helped me personally very much when I became the chair of reading that, um, along with overseeing, um, the work of the committee um, has been very helpful just to be reminded of the things that are available. So I think anything we can cut down in there that will help this committee and the next committee would be fantastic. Thank you.
Then I'm, do you, if Ms. Fisher and Ms. Griffin are accepting of a friendly amendment, if we added that other fifth bullet to grants and put the Dexter Community Foundation there as a list, would you be okay with that?
Yeah, definitely.
Ms. Fisher and Ms. Griffin, would you be
Yeah.
Going to make that friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, Wa, thanks for bringing that up. So we've got a motion by Fisher, um, second by Ms. Griffin to approve the, the document with that one small addition and the, um, extra C and et cetera, et cetera, et al. Are there other comments on the, the ACH master plan? Okay, seen, seen none. Um, Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve.
Yes. Michelle?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Very good. Please pass along the thanks to everybody on the ACH committee for their good work in that. Um, motion approved.
Will do, and thank you so much. It's been a work of a few months, um, during this year, so we really appreciate it.
Appreciate your help and, and attending this night, tonight. Uh, new business item L2 is a discussion item, uh, which Justin and I had talked about having sort of a standing discussion item on related to 3515 broad as different due diligence items, uh, occur and he gets additional information. So, um, Justin, I'll turn this over to you before, um, as our last new business item.
Sure. Um, so there's, there's a flurry of activity. We, I have a, a meeting with the appraiser tomorrow. In the last week, uh, I've had meetings with, um, partners in architecture, um, a couple of times. Um, and then in the last couple of weeks, um, me as partners in architecture, our IT vendor, Jeff Evans, it's, there, there, there's, there have been a number of meetings, um, at or about 3515. And, uh, actually just, just this afternoon, um, David and, and his team sent over, um, some updated documents. Um, we had a meeting on Friday to talk about, um, to, to kind of dive into the costs a little bit more. And, um, we talked about the cost for, um, inter- internal improvements, external improvements, and then, they have kind of broken out, um, uh, modifications and renovations to the building, um, that are, are kind of capital items that need to either happen, um, immediately, um, three plus years out and then five plus years out. Um, and they've done a, a great work, worksheet that, um, uh, shows those items and, and shows how those break out. And actually, if, if you'd like to, um, I can share my screen, um, and show you a, a little bit about what that looks like. Can I, can everybody see this document? So the, the, this was shared with us on Friday, or, uh, a draft version of this was shared with us on Friday and this is, um, an updated draft. So the idea is that, um, as they've gone through, as, as they walked through the building and made note of, um, items that, that may need to be addressed. They've broken it out by kind of priority or urgency with, um, priority one items here on the right being red, um, being the most urgent and the blue items, um, are, are more desirable items. Um, with that, without going, um, bullet point by bullet point, I mean, you, you can get a, a kind of a feel for the types of items. You know, um, a priority one item is, uh, you know, existing asphalt in, in parking lot is, is cracked and deteriorating. Ecentry retaining wall has some cracking and damage. Um, those are some priority one items, things that, that should be addressed um, sooner rather than later. And then, you know, priority three items are, um, an older retaining wall is spalled with exposed reinforcing. Um, it's currently stable. There, there isn't an emergency there. Um, so that can be addressed later on. Um, but so, you know, he, he's gone through and addressed site conditions, roof conditions, um, kind of all of those items that, um, that kind of go into a building inspection. Um, and then here at the bottom, there, Eve, he's kind of given a summary of, of those potential project costs and, and how those break out as far as, as, um, capital improvement items that unrelated to, um, remodeling that would make it, uh, usable for, for staff and the city. Uh, yeah, these are just a improvements that would need to happen to, to the, to the current building as it is now. I don't know if anybody has any, any questions on this. Um, my, my, my goal is to, to share, uh, this with council via email. Um, but I did just get this, um, less than an hour before, before the meeting today.
I, uh, Justin and I, Justin and I spoke about 20 minutes before the meeting and my suggestion was for him, if he can, to include as much of this in the, the email that goes out for our work session on Wednesday. So maybe we can at least look at it together and talk, touch on it. Um, maybe spend a little bit of time on that along with, uh, you know, general fund and whatever else Dustin has ready for us. Um, so you'll, you'll be getting in the packet as the, the idea.
Yep, yep. Um, the, the, the other item that, uh, that, that came today, and, and again, I'll, I'll, I'll share all this with, with council by email, um, is, um, kind of an overall, um, renovation remodel cost. Um, and this does include, um, some, if not all, of the priority one uh, immediate items that, that need to be addressed. Um, we'll say that you can see, you know, selective demolition, um, selective site, uh, exterior work. Um, the cost of the, the potential cost of the elevator, um, existing bui- building modification, first floor, second floor, and then the priority one items that were included in any other spreadsheet. So he's given, he's given a, a preliminary, uh, cost estimate for, for that work. Um, and again, we can, we can talk about this more, um, either now or on Wednesday. Um, and the, the potential budget impacts, um, you know, what, what that means.
Justin, let's, let's save that till Wednesday when everybody can have a chance to look at this a little bit, you know, instead of on a small screen and then,
Yeah.
we can get back together on it.
Okay, please.
Can you get that out as quick as possible so we can have some time before Wednesday?
Absolutely. My, my, my goal is to, to still get that out tonight.
Okay. Tomorrow morning would be good, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm not, please ask any questions that you have if you can tell. It just, I think it's hard to, to view all that at one time so quickly, so. If you, if you have questions, Jamie, I see your hands up. Please go next if you would, please.
Yep, thanks. Yeah, I think my, you, something I'd, you know, I would need more time to consider and if you did something I can pull from old packets or I don't know how easy it is to then put for, in what we're looking at for Wednesday. They know, sort of when we made this initial decision about 3515 broad is, it seemed clear that sort of the cost per square foot was very competitive based on the other possibilities we had at the time, whether it was 3045 broad or, um, 8040 Main Street or the Dexter Pharmacy, old Dexter Pharmacy building. Now that we have all these additional costs, you know, I'm, as much as possible, I'd like to be able to make sort of an apples apples comparison, sort of back to all those actions we had on the table when we made this initial decision and yeah, so either if that's something that can be added to the packet or something, you know, I can go back and, and dig up, but that's just something I would be wanting to consider in our discussions.
Sure. Um, the, the, the thing to note though i- is, um, I mean, any building that, that we purchase is going to have um, not only the, the, the improvement cost, you know, what happens to the outside, you know, any patching or what, whatever has happened, but the, the installation of a front counter and the furnishings and, and all the things that they go along with that. Um, and, uh, the cost provided in, in the sheet that I just showed you, um, include most, if not all of that.
Okay, okay, yeah, and yeah, just a reminder about that is, is helpful. So I appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you. Good comments. Um, Wa.
Um, I guess, I don't, I don't know how to ask this exactly, but as we're looking at what Justin just put up on the screen and we're able to get it more closely, are any of those things, things that we would be able to potentially negotiate off the purchase price? I mean, some of that, I, I mean, I only obviously have experienced buying residential and when I do an inspection, it's like, there are things that I look at and I say, you know, I'm not gonna, you need to pay for that. But I just don't know, do we have the same leverage here?
So, um, we, we, we did talk about that on Friday and, um, we have had conversations with, um, Jeff Evans of Swisher. Um, and he's asked, uh, a couple of times, um, for a listing of, of the things that, that we find um, so that he, he and the owner can start addressing them as, as soon as possible. Um, so my thought is now, now that we have this, this sheet, um, share um, at least the, the priority one items with them. So that way they can, they can start addressing those that are as much as they're willing to.
Well, and I just want to mention it because if that is something that, I mean, and it sounds like that's something that is I think we need to consider that or.
Yeah, well, I think it's a good point, you know, I think, I think that, um, so I, I attended the first, I don't know, 40 minutes of that meeting that was on Friday, virtual, virtual meeting before I had to go for my second COVID shot and, um, there was a lot of detail, you know, but for, for example, some of the lighting along some of the walls like in the meeting room is too low. They don't, it, it doesn't meet the height for somebody that might be vision impaired to walk under without bumping their head. So something like that, it's likely that they're gonna have to correct that no matter whoever it is buys the building. And I think an item like that, if we conveyed to them, they might be interested in, you know, getting started on a fix, uh, or, or certainly in, in my opinion, that's something that if they weren't willing to do, you know, we could potentially ask for a reduction of the purchase price if we wanted to, I guess. But, you know, we know that the front railing, you know, by the steps is loose from the concrete. There's things like that that, that can be fixed that I think makes sense to give them a heads up on that we've discovered. Um, I don't have that complete list because I haven't talked to Justin about it or what he's thinking, but I think you're on the right track, uh, on both fronts. You know, let them, let them know about them early and if they want to fix some, then they don't, they aren't an issue at the, you know, down the road. Or otherwise we'll have to have a discussion about them based upon council's, you know, agree, agreement with them, if you know what I mean. Does that make sense? That's a, it's a good, good thought. Justin, keep going, please.
Sure. Um, I, I don't know if anybody has any questions on any of the, the other material that I've provided in, in the memo. If not, I, I did put together the, um, draft request for information, um, like we discussed at the last meeting. I, oh, Jamie, have your hand up?
Yeah, yeah, it's about that. So if you want to finish your thought on that.
Sure, so, so, um, we took a, we took a shot at, um, at, at a first draft, um, but I wanted to run it by council before putting it out there to make sure that the, the tone was correct. Um, and, and what you were thinking, um, in giving direction to staff was that, that this is a sum of that. So i- if, if you wanna, you know, dive into that.
Jamie, you want to go first?
Yeah, sure. Um, yeah, my original comments weren't about that. I mean, I read through it and I thought it, it was fine. I thought it came across as very like, you know, this is a maybe, we're not sure, potentially interested in it. And I don't know, I guess I thought that that was fine because that's what it is. Um, but other people can certainly weigh in on that. My comment was sort of, uh, related. You know, we're talking about this 300 unit. There's that other barn, right? Uh, I don't know what you want to call it. Some other structure, sort of, you know, on the other side of the parking lot. Longer term, I don't know if we've talked about proposed use for that. Um, and I'm just wondering, given sort of the unique layout of that 300 unit, if it wouldn't be the case that in the future that barn would be actually the space that we would be more interested in, um, sharing with community in some fashion. I don't know if we had talked, maybe already missed or forgotten what we thought our plans would be for that. Maybe now is not the time to talk about it. Um, but just as it relates to monetizing it, it seemed like that separate structure might be more conducive than this 300 unit. Um, so those are my thoughts for now.
Okay, well, I, I can, I can tell you that, that kind of, you know, the, the way the way staff is kind of disgusted and conceptualized it is potential cold storage for, um, DPW and, and DPW equipment. Especially since, since, um, we've lost the, the barns in, in cold storage at, um, uh, the Dan Hoys site.
Okay.
Um, the DPW is, is in need of, of locations for, for storage.
Okay, and sort of, that sort of back garage area, like when we went way down over, I guess over that 300 unit, there was sort of like a garage there, right? That would not be sufficient or that would be in addition to.
I, 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 I think, I think wha- whatever we can make available or, or whatever is made available for the DPW, they, they have stuff to fill it.
Would get used, okay. Alright, thanks.
Uh, Wa, I see your hand as well.
Yeah, thanks. I do, I want to piggyback a little bit off of what Jamie was just saying, you know. You know, even in light of what was just said about storage. Um, I do think this is good. Um, my biggest concern with it, and I think, you know, this is my concern previously, is that we're limiting it to the 300 unit. Um, in addition to that barn, there's that. In addition to that barn, there's that little finished space next to the barn.
The guard jack.
Yeah, I mean, that could be something that somebody could use for something. Then there's, then, then I just can't help but think things like, okay, I mean, we don't have public meetings every night of the week, right? So what if somebody wants to use the potential council chambers for like a, a large meeting for their company or for their organization? So I just, I, I have concerns about limiting, limiting the discussion about sharing the space. And I guess that's the fault, I have to say.
Okay, well, the, does, I, I'm interested, Zach, if I could put you on the spot, you had requested the item. Interested in your, your thoughts on the document first.
I think this is a, a pretty good start for us to, to get out there. Concerning the council chambers, I definitely see that that's something that we can make available to community groups in the future. I don't think, knowing who would use it or how they would use it is as important as all this space. I, I, and I guess in my mind's eye too, for the, the out barn, the outbuilding. I, I saw lots of potential uses for that too, but in the short term, it would take a lot more efforts to get it up to a usable level for anything besides cold storage. So in my mind's eye, I saw it is, is providing storage space that we need right now. And in the future, ten or twenty years, if we purchase it, then that someone else can worry about that.
Is. Is there any desire? To have the document not specific to just renting?
Explain.
Well, like the, the title is renting space. What, what if people, what if we were to, I, I wasn't sure if we were asking. When we did, when we approved this a couple of weeks ago, I wasn't sure if we were asking. For all types of interest or just those that were interested in renting? And I was thinking it was going to be a little more broad. I mean, would we want somebody that might want to use three hundred? To let us know that, even if they wanted to try, like, let's say we were going to offer it for free. I mean, we're not, we haven't decided that we're renting it, so. But it might limit the group that may not be able to afford to use it. Well, yes, I guess what I didn't know is if, if we were gathering information, are we, are we, are we asking who might be interested? Rental or not, or is this just specific to renting? I can go either way, if that's the way, if we want to leave it this way. I'm just pointing out that. There might be other groups that would use the space, but might not have the ability to rent it from us.
So we could change that or address that by, instead of renting space, use of space.
That's what I was sort of thinking, Zach.
Yeah, that seems like a decent change to me.
Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I think you might have answered my question, but when, when we were talking about lending council chambers on nights that we're not using it. Would we be charging a rental fee because there would be maintenance and cleanup that would have to happen afterward?
Yeah, I think, I think all of that is to be determined. I was thinking that this first step is to figure out, you know, who from the community might be interested in the space. Given that we, we share the different spaces that are available, and then we can take that data in. And if we're able to fulfill the purchase, we can cross the bridge of, you know, how does it get rented to cover costs of cleaning or associated, you know, uses?
Gotcha. Thank you.
Does that make sense, Zach? What I, I want to make sure I'm consistent with what I'm steering to what your original motion was, so.
Me.
Okay, Ms. Griffin?
Yeah, I think just a follow up on that. If we do make it more general, which I am okay with. I, I think it would be great to know from the people interested if they would be willing and able to pay our rental fee. So maybe we find out that twenty people are interested in, but nobody wants to pay for it, or maybe we find out twenty people are, and they would be willing to pay for it. I think that's useful information, so somehow, somehow asking for that in a tactical way. And then the other question to Waz's question about that, sort of other separate smaller building. On page one forty-eight, one of the bullet points, like fourth up, it says, "Small private renovated tool shed for private calls or meetings." Is that, is that what that is? When I saw that, I was thinking of that little space, but I wasn't sure.
It is.
Yes, it is. Okay, so that, so just, I wanted to make sure while was aware that that little building was included there.
Yeah, although elsewhere, it does specifically mention the three hundred unit, so.
Yeah, and I guess that was, sorry.
Go ahead. Yeah, I'm done.
That was part of my, now that I'm looking at my notes from reading this part of the packet, that was part of my confusion about it. Was that there were things listed under there that weren't part of the three hundred unit. So if we, you know, I, I just was, I'm, I am a fan of broadening the language in general. For reasons that I've said, and that last one is one of them as well, I guess. And is it okay if I, were you done, Jamie?
I'm, I'm finished. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, to speak to what we were talking about with the, the what people could pay. I mean, maybe we ask what, what, you know, what would you expect to pay? Or what have you paid in the past, or some, something along those lines, rather than can you pay or can't you pay? Because, you know, I mean, maybe we have a sliding scale. But, you know, it might be helpful to get that input from the groups who themselves know what they have paid for space in the past. I don't know, just a thought.
Good suggestion. Justin, are you getting these comments down?
I am.
I think this is good. I appreciate the work you put in to get it to this point, and I appreciate council offering all those suggestions. Other thoughts? Paul, did I see you waving your hand?
Yeah, you did. And so. I assume that the page one thirty-nine refers back to the utilities cost. This talks about January two thousand and nineteen. Those are utility costs because there's no heading that tells me what that is.
Correct, yes. I'm sorry about that.
And secondly, down at the bottom, that's the last sentence, water and sewer utility costs for building have been provided in previous packets that are available to council requests. I would like to see all the cost of those in a single document. So that I can look at that, knowing full well that if you did anything else for anybody, place else, you'd have to pay similar types of things. But at least it gives me what it is for this building in the past. And that would be helpful to me to see what it is, okay?
And Justin, that should be easy. You had that in the budget, so you could just pull it out of the budget and put it into one eight and a half by eleven or something. That make sense? Yeah, well, you know, what we looked at last Wednesday. Okay, well, our goal is, like I said, our goal is going to be to have a standing item under new business, or maybe we'll move it up to business, I guess now. For just updates on thirty-five fifteen broad as they come in, so we're making sure we're hitting everything as things are occurring. I liked the nice little survey drawing that you used, that's from OHM and Current.
Uh, yeah, so, so that, that's actually their, their survey, their, their also survey.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, I'm going to move on to council comments because we still have a closed session to go, and I want to get into that too. So council comments, is it okay if I start with you, Zach?
I, I have nothing today.
Okay, how about Jamie next?
Oh, yeah, I'm looking forward to attending the additional MML training this weekend, and hopefully I'll be reporting back to you if I learn anything interesting.
Great. Ms. Fisher?
None for me, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cousins?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
And last but not least, why? Okay, our stu- two student members, Alex?
I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Okay, and then Bella?
Um, I have no comments.
Okay. Uh, we are down to non-arranged participation. This is the second item or second opportunity on the agenda for those in attendance to speak on any topic. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature or star nine if you're calling in. Is there anyone that would like to speak tonight? Okay, seeing none, I will seek a motion to go into closed session.
Support?
Was it Fisher that moved it?
Yes.
Thank you. And seconded by Cousins. And, and I'm assuming you're referring to the suggested motion on page one fifty-one.
Correct, I am.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the roll or vote to go into closed session. And then we can allow time for Justin to put the public into one room and us in another, and however that works.
Okay. Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes, I, can I clarify? It says, the motion says, "Potential purchase of property." So I just want to clarify that that should be discussed pending litigation.
I'm staring at the motion. Yep, you're correct. It's for pending litigation in accordance with MCL fifteen two six eight.
Correct.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so Jamie?
Yeah, yes.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Cousins?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle? Kio?
Yes. Okay, thank you. We are going into closed session. Justin, I'll let you split out the groups, please. So the public is aware, while he's doing that, we will come back out of closed session before adjournment. All right, everybody's back in. Okay, excellent. So we are, then we're still recording here, right? So we are back in open session. Is there a council member that would like to make a motion following the closed session?
I'll make a motion to proceed as discussed in that closed session.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Griffin. Is there a, so, a second? Second by Hubbard. Thank you, why? Any discussion needed? Ms. Jones, if you'd please call the vote.
Okay. Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes, I don't know what's happening. I'm saying yes.
That's okay. And we got to see a smile too.
Yeah, Kio?
Yes. All right, thank you. That concludes tonight's business. I'll seek a motion for adjournment, please.
I'll move.
Move by Fisher?
Or Cousins.
Seconded by Cousins. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you for a good meeting this evening, everyone, and for those of the public attending, and for staff for your participation and hard work. Everybody have a really good week. We'll talk on Wednesday at the next budget workshop.